Good morning, and we'll call to order the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada. Ms. Quigley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Commission, your first item is to approve your agenda, which is in order and ready for your approval.
Entertainer motion on that. Thank you. Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? And that motion carries.
All right. Next item is your General Manager's Report, and we would like to start off with some good news. We recently had an unveiling event with our partners from Home Depot, the Siegel Group, and Wells Fargo. These are private sector property owners who have been working with the RTC by donating land right away so that we can relocate our shelters at least five feet away from the edge of the curb. As you know, our safety studies are showing that the most effective thing that we can do for our rider safety is to move those shelters back at least five feet away. In doing so, we reduce the probability of incursion or incident by up to 80 percent. So we are very lucky. As you know, it is difficult for us to adjust on our own, get the right away we need to move these shelters back. So by having these private sector partners contribute and work with us, we are sending a strong message to our community that we care and that private sector understands the importance of our passenger safety. Congresswoman Dina Titus was in town for the event, and it was actually at her prodding and pleading and personal phone calls that they agreed to donate this land. We're greatly appreciative to her as well. I've been talking with you over the past year or so about the fact that Rossi Rollancotta, President and CEO of the Las Vegas Visitors Convention Authority, who I think is one of the greatest assets that we have in Southern Nevada, created what he calls this Transportation Steering Committee wherein, for the first time ever, he pulled a group of people together who are responsible or have a nexus for moving people within our resort corridor, between our major economic centers, being the airport downtown, the resort corridor, and UNLV, pulled us all together in one room and told us, "This isn't about you. This isn't about your business. This is about the fact that if we are going to continue to grow and stay competitive globally at securing conventions and conferences and visitor growth, we're all going to have to work together to figure out how we are going to move people between those major economic centers. We're not going to be able to do it just with the existing infrastructure." So as a result of that committee's effort, the RTC agreed to take on what we call the Transportation Investment Strategy Study. And as part of your consent agenda today, at Agenda Item Number 24, we will be awarding a contract to a consultant team to do the following: to study the existing capacity of our infrastructure, to identify what the future demands are going to be, what we're going to need to do in order to move people from where they are to where they need to go, and prioritize the investments. We're going to identify the investments that need to be made. Inevitably, there'll be requirements for additional roadway infrastructure, for probably some mass transit, for some connectivity to the airport, definitely connectivity to the convention center as it unveils its new global business district. The Evaluation Committee was a subgroup of the larger committee. On the Evaluation Committee, we had Terry Jazinski from the LVCBA, we had Brent Bowe from Whittlesey Bowe, Virginia Valentine from the Nevada Resort Association, Kristin McMillan from the Las Vegas Metro Chamber, Marty Sparks from the Mandalay Bay Convention Center, Tom Skanki from LVGE, Rosemary Vassiliadis from McCarren Airport, Randy Tar from the county, Jorge Cervantes from the city, and Greg Gilbert and David Swallow from the RTC. As a result, the Evaluation Team unanimously came up with the recommendation of Michael Gallis and Associates, which is a firm that has experience nationally and internationally like similar type projects, and they have teamed locally with CH2M Hill and Jeremy Aguero and Slater Hanifin. I have received a letter from, I received letters from Chuck Bowling and from Jorge, who was not able to be here today. I'd like to read you the letter, and then also, we have members of the Evaluation Committee who would like to say a few words as well. So this is, "Dear Tina, thank you for your efforts to launch the Transportation Investment Master Plan. Our community has long enjoyed a well-earned reputation as an international destination and premier city for hosting major events. The nearly 150,000 hotel rooms, unique entertainment venues, and over 10 million square feet of convention and meeting space together help create a remarkable experience for the nearly 40 million annual visitors. Meeting the needs of those who visit Las Vegas for conventions and major sporting and entertainment events is critical to our economic future. During the recession, the need to grow and diversify our economy became more apparent than ever. Our state's economic development and diversification efforts depend on a robust and reliable transportation network. MGM Resorts International supports the initiation of this study, the objective of which is to develop a comprehensive business plan for transportation system, for a transportation system that will grow and enhance the experience of the residents and visitors. We look forward to commencing work with the selected team and working with the Regional Transportation Commission." So a very exciting era, I think, for Southern Nevada in that we, I think we've got all the stakeholders and interested parties at the table sharing their insights as to what we need to do to move forward. So with that, I would like to invite those members of the Evaluation Committee who are with us today to address the board and share their thoughts.
Terry Jazinski, Senior Vice President of Operations for the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority, Manager of the Las Vegas Convention Center. As Tina said, the LVCBA is very excited to be engaged in this process and to work in partnership with the Commission and the staff to further our long-term plans. Many of you have had the opportunity to hear Rossi Rollancotta talk about what we are calling the Las Vegas Global Business District, and this idea is in lockstep with that long-term vision, making sure that not only do we meet the infrastructure needs, but more importantly, we meet the customer expectations. So it's about what the destination can be five years from now, 10 years from now, but just as importantly, it's about what the convention and Visitors Authority can produce in terms of trade shows, events at the convention center, citywide events, special events, and the 40 million people who come to Las Vegas now on an annual basis, knowing that that number will increase to eventually 50 million, 60 million, and having the infrastructure and the tools in place to meet their expectations. So the LVCBA is very pleased to be a part of this. We support it, and we hope that you will support the funding of this study. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Virginia Valentine with the Nevada Resort Association, and I want to say that we are very appreciative of the opportunity to be engaged in the Transportation Investment Study. I have been involved in transportation studies in the corridor since sometime in the '90s, and I will tell you, I think this is a, this is a little different. This is, I think, a fresh start. It's a different approach, and I think that between you, your staff, Tina, Rossi, and his staff have done an excellent job of engaging all the stakeholders at the table. Some of you may have seen on Tuesday Jeremy Aguero make a presentation to the LVCBA Board where he mentioned that about 46 percent of the economy or the jobs in Southern Nevada are related to the tourism industry. So we're very interested in what happens, of course, down there, and we really welcome and appreciate the opportunity to be very engaged. I just have one little story to tell you real quickly. Yesterday, I watched somebody speak at lunch about Project Link, and he talked about how high it was and how big it was and how it was so unique and it had all these great engineering properties, and it was 100 feet taller than the London Eye in the sky. But the thing that people were most excited about was when he said, "And you can get there off of COVALL." So I think this is a, that and the sprinkles cupcakes, right? And Curtis wanted me to point out, you can also get there from the monorail. But at any rate, I think everybody recognizes that we need to do something big, comprehensive. We need a vision, and we need to have the community's support so to be successful. So thank you again. We support it. We're looking forward to the discussion, the dialogue, and the results. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Kristin McMillan. I am President and CEO of the Las Vegas Metro Chamber of Commerce. We have been very honored to have been brought in to represent our over 5,000 businesses that we have as part of the Metro Chamber as part of this process, as really a partner in this process. I think it's been unique for all of the stakeholders that are involved in this to have been invited in, come together, start at the very beginning of this process, at the inception of this process, and also very uniquely, will be involved as we continue on through this as part of the stakeholder group, which has been identified as an extremely important part of this process. So we're grateful for that. As Las Vegas is positioning itself to compete in the global economy and actually to compete worldwide for jobs, which is what we all need to be focusing on at this point, this is a very important project. And it's not just a project. It's not just an exercise. It starts with a strategy. It starts with a framework, and it is going to turn into an actual business plan for our community. And I think we can be proud of the fact that it's going to be a useful tool for us, a useful business plan, and not just a community development tool, but an economic development tool, because we do need to focus on jobs in this community and growing the economic health of our community. So whatever we can do to help in this process, we're so happy that you're taking this on. We hope that you will approve the recommendation of Ms. Quigley here today and that we can continue to be very helpful in this process. Thank you so much.
Good morning. Brent Bowe, Whittlesey Bowe Transportation. I operate taxi cabs, limousines, and minibuses in this town. I also serve as President of the Livery Operators Association, which represents the majority of taxi cab, limousine, and bus operators in Las Vegas. I'm proud to have a seat at the table and be able to provide input in something like this. I think this is the first time the evil cab companies have ever been invited to something like this, so it's fantastic to be here. And from our perspective as taxi cab and livery operators, I want everybody to know that we're not opposed to the monorail, and I'm not saying that because of the large gentleman behind me. What the taxi industry was opposed to with respect to the monorail was that quarter-mile stretch on Paradise Road right at Sierra Vista where it was built. That cost us three lanes of traffic, and it really causes major problems when we have large conventions trying to get in and out of there. That's what we are opposed to. We believe that if we're going to grow and we're going to attract the kind of conventions that we want to take the town to the next step, we need alternative forms of transportation, but we've got to do it the right way. We've got to make sure we don't cripple the dominant form of transportation, which is the taxi cabs, limousines, and buses. So from that standpoint, I would urge you that the very next step is this study. So I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Curtis Miles, President and CEO of Las Vegas Monorail. Brent and I will be in a UFC match on Friday. Tina and I and Rossi got together about two years ago, almost two years ago, right after she was appointed to this position and started talking about what we would do, which was interesting, because typically in Las Vegas, you don't get people who are perceived to be competitors getting together and figuring out how to solve problems. The monorail and the RTC is perceived to be competitors, but we're not. We're actually complements to each other. I mean, we don't serve what the RTC serve, and it's not our goal and it's not our aim. And the RTC does a very good job of serving not just the outlying community, but the resort corridor in itself. A good example of why a study like this is needed was presented to us last week over the course of five days. ConAcon Expo was last week, and what Brent said is true. We take up, not quite what he said, but we take up about a lane and a half of traffic on Paradise. And if you drove down to Paradise, Flamingo, Twain, Convention Center Drive, Sahara last week during that convention, you saw very starkly why this study is so needed and why we need to put it together the way that Tina suggested putting it together. Not just study what needs to be done, come up with a way to actually execute what you put in the study and fund it. And that's what this study is envisioned to do. It took me about 40 minutes to get from our offices on the corner of Hughes Center and Paradise to COVALL, which is about, it's less than a quarter of a mile. Took me 40 minutes at 5:30 last Wednesday. And I measured it, knowing that I was coming here today. I said, "Let me see just how difficult it is." Okay? I went through four cycles of stoplights at Hughes and Spring Mountain. Four cycles. I did a U-turn at Hughes and Spring Mountain and went back to Flamingo and went through two more cycles of lights before I got to COVALL. That's how bad it is. We have that happen six times a year in this community with the large citywide conventions. So does this study need to be done? It's obvious it needs to be done. What the study is presenting that hasn't been presented before is that it's going to actually present to us, to this community for the first time, how to actually execute these projects and how to fund them. And so we are in 100% support of this as the Las Vegas Monorail. My staff is in support of it so we can get out of our offices when these citywides are being conducted. But more importantly, it allows us to take all the infrastructure in the city, including the Las Vegas Monorail, and put together a plan that shows how all the infrastructure can effectuate change in how we move people in and out of resort corridor. So we're 100% support of it. We hope that you will approve it on the consent agenda, and thank you for giving us the time today.
Thank you.
Okay. If we don't have any questions regarding that issue, we'll move on to, oh, yeah.
Commissioner Gee, and then Councilman Ross.
Thank you. I think that the key point I heard was, if we're going to study this, let's figure out how to fund it and actually implement it. And I think that's the key piece to where we're at at this point. The consortium has been phenomenal to work with. As I've long been a proponent of light rail, and I'd love to see it on Maryland, it's wherever it properly fits, but I think the airport is our entryway to allow us to do something similar to what Phoenix did, which then generated, as the Metro Chamber said, jobs revitalization, repurposing of many businesses along that corridor. All of that is economically better for us. I would hope, though, that we also make sure that if the Stadium Committee does recommend a stadium on the UNLV campus at Flamingo, we need to take that into account and the interconnectivity that needs to come into play, because otherwise, that will be even worse. You're right, Curtis. I got stuck there. I should have known better than drive down, and I spaced it out, and I was there for an hour and a half just trying to, it was insane. So that will be another compliment that comes into play. Link is a perfect example of, yeah, Winnick and Albert and all the old side streets that we used to be able to cut through, but we've got to find a better way to move those people through that traffic so they can get an access to the strip. What I'm excited about is maybe the strip will also look at a different way of moving people in that corridor as part of this conversation. I think we're, you may need to brush off some of the old one-way ideas. I mean, all of those factors have to come into play as we look at it, so we don't scare businesses, but maybe there's part of the plan is how you reroute things so that they're not negatively impacted by the transit plans that are there. And it could be the interconnectivity. There is a place for every taxi, bus, limo, yes, Curtis, even monorail, and light rail, and trolleys, and whatever. We're innovative. This is Vegas, and so we can come up with as many different, unique ideas on how you move people, but I hope that we also don't forget about our residents. As we look at the tourist side, we have to look at how we move our residents from the Bonneville Station to downtown, to North Las Vegas, even eventually to Boulder if they want to play. But there are ways that we can look at this whole valley to make sure that we're looking at the economic side of that interconnectivity that comes into play. And so I think that the study will be a phenomenal piece. The only thing is, I don't know, what does EMDR stand for?
EMDR?
It was in one of the backup stuff I was reading. And then I thought it was great that you're still called livery operators. Do we have horses that we're going to have? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You can get it to me later. I just wasn't sure what the.
EMDR. Okay, I'll have to take a look at it, too. It's not.
All right, I'll come back to it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilman Ross.
And I have a lot of things that Commissioner Jim Kiliani just mentioned, but I see raise in the audience today. This is the big news of the day in our community, as far as I'm concerned. This is huge, because everyone's been at the table. It is a good time to serve on this board because of the aggressive nature that we're going forward with, inclusive of everyone, and I think that's the most significant. I'm so proud of all of you. I'm just sitting here, I knew this was coming, and I'm just sitting here giddy in my seat because this is big, big news to me. Everyone is at the table, Ms. Quigley, and, you know, Mr. Rollancotta has done a fabulous job, all of you have. And, you know, some of you I've known since my childhood, and so it's really cool for me to be sitting here and hearing this come out of this group of people. These are, and Kristin will understand this, you guys are the tribal leaders in this community. You are the driving force, and whether you like it or not, you are. And we need you at the table and continue to have this conversation, because the silos have been broken, and everyone's talking about this. And we, as local governments, are doing certainly our part in our share to make this move forward, so I'm really excited about the outcome. One thing that I need to make, I think is pretty significant, is doing. I think Mr. Miles made comment to that. You know, once we decide what this study brings out, is actually implementing it and making it happen, you know, doing it. And I think that's what's going to be significant, and I think Commissioners and Mayor and Councilwoman, we have an obligation to step forward and make sure that whatever comes from this study, we do our best to make it happen for everyone's benefit. So I'm excited about that. I'm excited about a whole lot of things right now. Las Vegas is moving in the right direction, and it's just great.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Ignore that EDMR. I was reading two different documents, so it's not yours. And secondly, I think there's some funding opportunities that we should make sure that we have in the conversation, and that's those new market tax credits that we were hearing about, that there are other financing schemes that we've not taken advantage of, and that one could potentially be something that assists or complements whatever we're looking at. So I would just put that out as a note. Thank you.
And. Thank you all for coming down. Tina, as far as the Agenda on Item 24 on Consent, that's to direct staff to negotiate a contract.
Negotiations with the selected.
That'll be brought back to the board at a later date.
And bring it back in April for final.
And that scope is based on the original RFP? Okay, good. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for those who came down to testify today. No, this is just General Manager's Report of Consent. The item's actually on Consent, so.
I'm motioning.
Okay. All right. We got it. We want to share a video with you that staff, we recently asked staff to identify that gave them complete creative freedom to kind of inventory all the things that the RTC is currently working on, and we have shared this with a few of you, and we'd like to share it publicly.
Fuel revenue indexing is so important because we're just emerging from the recession.
If you follow Nobel-winning economists, they'll tell you that investing in infrastructure, transportation infrastructure, educational infrastructure, fundamental infrastructure is extremely important.
What the Regional Transportation Commission has done over the life of the organization has really focused on what needs to happen here in Southern Nevada.
Really, it was to take the concept of fuel revenue indexing into, to accomplish it in a very short period of time, and we've seen that in the past 12 months.
First of all, it creates jobs, and one of the most important things that we need now are jobs. The second thing is that it helps business. It helps the residents, because it makes it easier for people to get around, for goods to get around.
Fuel revenue indexing funding will go for several projects. I think the list is 180 or 185, but I think to drill down on some specific projects.
Interstate 11.
Say I-11.
Phoenix and Las Vegas are the only two major metropolitan areas in the desert southwest with a population of a million people or more who are not connected by an interstate highway system.
When we have that connection, it's going to take us that next step forward into becoming a international city.
It's probably the most significant transportation infrastructure project that this state has embarked upon in probably 100 years.
You've taken the infrastructure of this valley, and you're building it up and fixing what's internal and spiraling it out to a regional basis.
The RTC is leading the way of how we better connect our community, primarily getting workforce to workplace, connecting our tourists to the right destinations, and connecting our community in a way that we will be able to compete economically, educationally, and sustainably around the world.
Without the RTC planning for the future, it wouldn't be possible for us to build the communities in the way that we do.
We have a moral obligation to leave a viable transportation infrastructure for future generations. We must do this, and that's why this revenue is so critical to the future of our community, both inside Nevada and throughout the desert southwest region.
I've been with the RTC for 21 years, and in that time, I've viewed an amazing amount of changes, all for the better.
The smart and the successful cities are the ones that are really going to be putting together the best business models for growth, to really promote that job growth.
Without the dedicated RTC employees, a lot of what has been achieved in the last year would not have been possible.
I think the first thing that Tina and her team have done, which is outstanding, is to, is to really, is the outreach into the community.
Tina and the RTC Board have always been committed to enabling RTC employees to achieve a work-life balance.
What are the needs of companies? What are the needs of employers? What are the needs of employees?
The RTC and Tina are dedicated to motivating their employees to ensure that our community receives top-notch customer service and forward-thinking project development.
I've been riding the bus for like the last three months.
I'd say about 10 years.
Couple of years.
Off and on since 1991.
Had a car issue, but, you know, come to find out, it's a lot cheaper.
It's cheap travel. You don't have to pay for gas.
It's cheap.
Traffic-wise, you know, it cuts down on gas and everything.
Just recently, in the last five or six years, since they've put a lot more buses on the street.
Yeah, it's pretty reliable. Gets me on time wherever I need to go.
Don't have to worry about maintenance on vehicles. That's the type of thing. You don't have to pay gas. It's just way more economical.
At one time, our transportation system in America was number one. It's no longer number one.
What happens in the event that the revenue available from this indexing wasn't to materialize? Number one, 185 projects don't get constructed. Number two, construction workers that are currently sitting idle continue to be sitting idle, which means increased payments in terms of unemployment benefits, things like that, decreased productivity of our overall economy. And I don't think it's any illusion to anyone that our economy has been hit pretty hard by the economic downturn.
Tina has been a great leader from the standpoint of she understood the vision of looking at the problems and knowing that there are solutions to those problems.
We learned that economic development, but also economic diversification, are critically important to our economy.
We may be able to put the blueprint together for communities and states to see, this is how we do this. We get all the transportation experts, all the transportation organizations, private and public, to work together to try to solve this.
I don't know that I can point to a time where the community came together for a specific purpose.
If you look at the success of the LVCBA over the years, it's truly been about partnerships.
Frankly, if we didn't have the RTC doing it collectively, or at least guiding that process, it would likely cost us all a bunch more money.
This will truly change Las Vegas as a destination. It'll take us into the international marketing place, being a true international city.
Right? When it's done, when the construction is finished, we have an asset. It's an asset that we use every day. We move goods from one place to another. We pick our kids up at school. We go to work. We get goods and services on those roadways.
This leadership role that we have here today with this.
This leadership role that we have here today with this infrastructure, this partnership, is going to be one that everyone is going to be looking at and say, look what Las Vegas did, look what Nevada did.
Kind of some insight into the efforts and initiatives that we've been working on over the last year. We asked staff to just kind of inventory the things that we've been doing, talk with some of our community partners, and we gave them complete creative freedom to come up with this video, and I just wanted to show it off to you because I think it was pretty good. Next, we promised you at our last board meeting that we would come back to talk to you about the differences between federal contracts and local contracts as it relates to outreach and inclusion of DBE and minority firms. So I'm going to share a few slides with you, and then I'm going to turn it over to Angela Torres Castro, who's going to explain to you some of the efforts that she's been working on. So federal projects. When a project has even a dollar of federal funds included in it, we do have to go through certain processes that we otherwise don't have to go through locally, or we just have different processes locally. When a federal, when a project has federal money, which means that it's coming from FHWA, it flows through the feds to NDOT, and then on to either RTC or the local entities, so the county or the cities directly. NDOT becomes responsible for making sure that all the grant assurances are complied with, with that federal money. And those grant assurances include things like anti-lobbying, or federal wage rates, or Buy America provisions. It also includes, it also sets a DBE, a disadvantaged business enterprise goal, and then it also has a good faith effort evaluation to see whether or not the lowest bidder did in fact meet, if they didn't meet the DBE goal, if they made a good faith effort. So the goal setting is based on a couple of things. A disparity study is done to determine the makeup of the demographics, in our case of the state. And then also, there's an inventory done on the availability of DBE firms that are ready, willing, and able to perform the work. It is a low bid process. When low bid is opened, if the lowest bidder did not meet the minimum goal, for example, 10%, if they came in at 6% rather than 10%, the next step is to go through the good faith effort. And as part of that, the good faith effort determination is based on either of the following: that documents that it has obtained through the DBE participation meet the goal, or the documents that, it documents that it made adequate good faith effort to meet the goal. And the definition of good faith efforts is outlined in Federal Regulation 26.53, which asks a series of questions as to how much effort and outreach that firm did to try and get participation from the disadvantaged, or the DBE community. If it is determined that they did not meet that goal, the low bidding firm does have the opportunity to ask for a reconsideration, and as part of that reconsideration, the evaluator will take a look at whether or not the original reviewer was arbitrary or capricious in any way in their determination. If they were not, then the decision is upheld. Now, for local projects, there is not a DBE. It is governed by Nevada Revised Statute, and in doing so, there is no DBE or good faith effort required, provision required. It does go to the lowest bidder, but there is a 5% bidder's preference can be given to local firms or states that, I'm sorry, firms that are operating within the state of Nevada. Although there are no goals required, we can encourage as much participation as possible, and Angela will be talking about that. If there is a CMAR or a construction management at risk approach, or a design-build approach, we can add a weighted factor in the scoring to encourage DBE participation. So is there any questions regarding the two processes at this point? If not, I'll turn it over to Angela at this point. I do want to say that as part of our commitment to the electeds, as we went through the fuel tax indexing effort, we promised that we would, we RTC would do all that we could to get a better understanding of the local business community, the minority community, and that we would outreach, and we wouldn't just give lip service to it, that we would actually make a concerted effort to make a program that would encourage the growth of small businesses. When you read, when you read economic development books, in fact, I'm thinking of The Coming Jobs War by Jim Clifton, it's very clear that a community's economic growth and development is based on the success of small businesses. Small businesses are actually what make America grow, and so at our local level, I want to convey to you, we take that very seriously, and we will be working with our prime contractors as much as we can to help them understand the importance. So our message to those big crimes out there, paving, granite, aggregate, Meadow Valley, we are watching you, and we will be in constant communication with you to make sure you understand that this is important to us. So with that, I will turn it over to Angela to explain to you what she has been doing. And this has been absolutely Herculean, a Herculean effort to learn as much as we can in a short amount of time about the different firms that exist in southern Nevada, the different programs that exist in southern Nevada, and pull everybody together, and so that we're all talking on the same page. Great. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Angela Castro, Director of Marketing, Media, and Government Affairs with the RTC. At our last board meeting, you requested that we give you an update of our progress so far in engaging the community about our fuel revenue indexing projects and the process. But before I begin, I want to let you know that the program that I'm about to talk about was not only developed with your direction and with Team RTC, but in the last six months, this has truly been a collaborative effort. We've heard and we received input from the construction industry, from community organizations, from business leaders, and from other elected officials. So as we go through the program, it really was, has evolved into what I call a community The very first thing that we did, Clark County Board of Commissioners adopted the ordinance in September approving fuel revenue indexing. Two weeks later, our board gave us direction through the adoption of Local Resolution 315 that basically set the standard for two things. To the extent legally possible, you required us to ensure that the jobs are kept local, that we're hiring locals, and the second thing, that we're creating opportunities for small businesses, minority organizations, and women-owned businesses. Those are the two things that you guys have told us. From that, once we've adopted the resolution, we came back and we asked you for your help, saying we need to go back to all local governments and adopt similar resolutions, and we were able to do that within 30 days. And our approach was, let's go from a top-down. Let's start with the elected officials and then work through the different organizations. Once we did that, we came back and Team RTC, with Tina's direction, said, we need to create a vision and mission. What are we going to do? We now got direction from our board, and how are we going to do that? And we developed the vision and mission, was to create and provide local small business minority contractors, apprentices, and engineering students with opportunities to be included and benefit from fuel revenue indexing projects. We then said, great, what's our objective, and how are we going to get there? We said, you know, the most efficient and effective thing that we can do at this time is to inform, educate, and engage all local small businesses and minority contractors by developing meaningful partnerships with them and calling them our connectors and small business minority organizations in each community. That was our objective. Perfect. How do we get there? What's the roadmap? What we understood very quickly, and Fred and Mike and all of us understood Team RTC, was that there's a lot of multiple moving parts, and we needed a roadmap to figure out how we were going to implement this. And so, and we needed to communicate that with the connectors. So you have the RTC, we have the fuel revenue indexing projects, you guys at the board approved that. We then work with the local government and entities. They solicit, they put out the bids to the prime contractors. The prime contractors then work with local small business, women, and minority-owned businesses, and then they work on, the other component is a workforce development, training, and internships. So great, now we developed the program. Who's our connectors? Who are the people that we currently have relationships with? Who are the people that we need to go and develop relationships with? And how do we do that? And we broke them up into categories. We have the prime contractors, which is, you know, we're working with the Association of General Contractors, the big contractors that Tina had just talked about, Kiwet, Las Vegas Paving, Meadow Valley, working with all of them and getting them on the same page, and educating them about fuel revenue indexing, but also educating them about the resolution and the need to create opportunities for small businesses. We then met with the small business minority and women-owned organizations, the National Association of Minority Contractors, Tom Acres, the Urban Chamber, the Latin Chamber, the Asian Chamber. We all got them in one room, and we started to talk to them as well. We then moved into workforce connectors, and our workforce connectors really are labor. And we worked with Workforce Connections, worked with several other organizations, including Workforce Connections, Nevada Partners, Las Vegas Urban League, the Latin Chamber Foundation, to name a few. We then worked with the public entities at each of the local governments, and then state and local agencies as well. What is the program? Tina and Fred made it very clear when we did this, that we needed to develop a turnkey program. We had to develop a program that was easy. It was easy for the prime contractors, easy for the small businesses to get involved and to get engaged. So the first thing that we did, and the most obvious and the easiest thing that we could do, is adopt the resolution and include the resolution in bid documents. I have to say, after a meeting with some of the connectors, they came back and told us, hey, RTC, you're serious. Not only do you need to include the documents in, as part of the bid process, but you need to show up. You need to come to these pre-bid meetings, and you need to let the prime contractors and the subcontractors know that we are serious. And Fred and Mike's team has really taken the efforts and taken the lead on that in terms of attending the pre-bid meetings, and Tina, myself, and Greg will go as needed and when our schedule permits. But we are, we do have a presence at these pre-bid meetings, and we are communicating your direction in terms of keeping the jobs local and working with small business and minority subcontractors. We then, what I would just did, and how I would best describe it, is a Match.com session with, and we hosted roundtables with connectors. So we had prime contractors, we had minority subcontractors, we had both union and non-union apprentice programs, we had representatives from there, we had purchasing departments. Each of your purchasing departments had a representative, each of your public works departments had a representative, and we did a meet and greet session where they got to meet each other, talk to each other, talk about the concerns, how do they get the jobs? It was very, very successful. From that, we developed, what we learned through each of these Match.com sessions was that there was two issues that we had in the community. The first issue was with the prime contractors and the question of capacity. Is there enough capacity to attract local small business minority and women-owned enterprises in roadway construction? Is there enough small business organizations out there? Was the first question, and that was from the prime contractors. The second issue that we have is we have a trust and credibility issue with the small business community. And how do we, how do we develop that, and how do we break down that barrier? And what we learned after going back and having several conversations is that everyone worked in their different silos. So NDOT has a DBE list of small businesses, the Urban Chamber has their list, the Latin Chamber has their list. And so MJ's team really took the list, I mean, it was like a 1,600 business list, and went down and vetted that list. And her team went in and said, okay, do they have a business license? Are they valid to do work in southern Nevada? And we validated the list, and we created our own list. To make it turnkey, we include this list of small businesses, which is, we're always updating it, we're updating it at least weekly right now, as part of the bid process. There's a link. So if I'm a prime contractor submitting a bid in, I have an opportunity right then and there to work with a local small business. The next thing that we did, and we heard from the labor force, that, hey, you're doing all this work and encouraging local small businesses, what are you doing to hire the existing workforce, to put them back to work? How are you promoting the trade? And so Mike took the lead and developed a training program, and it requires X amount of hours, and that is now included in bid documents as well. To that effort, we also, Workforce Connections has stepped up to the plate and has helped us make this turnkey. Kennedy Richardson from Workforce Connections is working with both union and non-union to say, hey, if I am a Las Vegas paving, for example, and I'm required to do X amount of training, I go to Workforce Connections to find me that apprentice. And then in the community, she's also going out and she's doing, she's promoting trade. So if anybody who's interested in the construction industry can now work through her, and she'll get you the skills and the experience, or Workforce Connections will, and that is another component. Most recently, our team, Team RTC, met with Clark County, and we said, what else, oh, I'm sorry, it's the development of public outreach. Okay. So Tina and I actually went out, and we've given a lot of presentations, and what we've heard from the community, this is the average resident at home, is how are, you're building 185 transportation projects in the next three years. How am I going to know how it impacts my commute? How am I going to know what detours to take, when the project's going to be done? And that's when we went back to Fred and Mike, and we said, we need, we need some type of public outreach component. And so we included in the bid documents a public outreach component. And then most recently, we met with Clark County, and we said, what else can we do that we're not doing? What other opportunities can we do to further encourage the prime contractors and everyone to work together? And that's where we came up with the development of a small business survey that is included in the bid documents. So shortly after, the top three bid documents are submitted, we go and we ask both the prime contractors and the small businesses, one, did you get involved? Two, why didn't you, if you did or did not, why? And then we get that feedback. And the last thing, which is most important, in my opinion, is taking everything that we're doing and constantly communicating with the connectors, updating our website, and then monitoring our projects. And just to give you an idea, we keep everything on the RTC's website. So in front of you is a fuel revenue indexing logo of our website. You click on that. If you want to learn more about fuel revenue indexing, everything is on this page, but more specifically, if you want to learn about the projects, if you want to know if your business is added into this local small business directory, if you want to find an intern, or if you want to know where we're at with the projects and how many projects we've let out, it's all on this page. If you want, if you want to get notified of updates anytime we update the project, it's also, you can click on this page. Lastly, before I close, there's a lot of people that have helped, and a lot of organizations that have helped with this program, and some people are here today, and I want to recognize them because they take calls from us daily, probably, if it's not from my department, Mike's department, or MJ's, Fred's department, or MJ's department. They get calls, meetings, and emails. And with us, we have, from the Urban Chamber of Commerce is Ken Evans, and then we have Shondell Newsom, who's really helped lead the way on this, and then from the Latin Chamber of Commerce, we have Carlos Gomez as well. Kennedy Richardson from Workforce Connections apologized, she couldn't make it, she was going to attend as well. So I just wanted to point out that this is work in progress. We are not anywhere near done. We are constantly having conversations and working towards it. It's been six months. This is where we're at in the six months, but we are, we're moving ahead.
Commissioner Gee, and then Councilman Russ.
Thank you. Phenomenal outreach, and I do appreciate, because I know it was Commissioner Weekly that really stressed it, but I think to a commissioner, we wanted to make sure that we were doing everything we could to encourage small business and minority-owned business and women-owned businesses to be able to participate. I think gleaning the NDOT list, and I appreciate over the years that they've built that list out of commitment, I think from Assemblyman Hogan, kind of with a little bit of nudging, but built that list, but you need to glean those from time to time, and I think that that's a huge effort for your team to have done, MJ. But we need to know who has what skill sets, so that if we don't, if we know we have 22 of these, then you should set your threshold for your DBE based on that, rather than something pie in the sky, or even too low, as far as that's concerned. And then where it is only two or three, that's where we should be working, and we still need to consolidate all the workforce investment numbers and dollars and all that kind of stuff, but that's where we should then say, we need to grow this to at least 10. Here's the skill set that we need, and that ought to be where that public-private sector comes into play for training the folks, so that we then have ample people to be able to bid on those projects. So I think we're off to a good start. I think in the long run, it will benefit this community, because we always hear the stories, but we don't always know what skills are actually needed or what's out there as people come in. And you know, if they're paying... And you know, if they're paying business license taxes and fees, they should be able to compete more so than someone just going out of state. So I think this will help us in the long run. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, thanks to the staff. You did a great job.
Thank you, Commissioner. Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have I told you guys how cool I think this is? Once again, I mean, just like the previous presentation, Ms. Quigley's previous presentation on infrastructure and breaking down those silos, you have gone, I was telling Commissioner Brown that you didn't go the extra mile, you went the extra 10 miles, honestly. And I'd like to say that I wish our governments would do the same thing and follow the example and the leadership of the RTC and your staff, Ms. Quigley, because you all are doing a phenomenal job. And again, it's an exciting time to be a part of this board, to be a Las Vagan, to be part of what we're, what we're all doing, especially when it comes to this, this fuel revenue that we're going to receive. And hopefully, this will go on and on and on. I did, to my, my board members, I will tell you that I give Ms. Quigley a hard time about that list of projects, because most of them seem to be in Henderson. I'm just teasing you. But there's a lot of significant projects out there. And, you know, good job, Angela, for bringing everybody to the table and having this discussion, because it sends a massive message to this community that we are doing this the right way and we're including everybody and not excluding anyone. So that being said, it's, it's good to see this happening and an exciting time once again. I look forward to these meetings and these reports, because they're so significant to our economy, to job creation, to the integrity of this organization, and the integrity of our, our local governments as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman.
Well, I know it's a very long-term management before, but we have one more topic to cover with you. It's not quite as field, but it's stuff that we definitely want to share with you. We're going to talk about fixed route safety and security. And in particular, we're going to talk about disruptive and illegal behavior policies. We've asked both MV and Keolis to address you today, to share with you their policies regarding how they deal with disruptive and illegal behavior on their routes. So with that, I'd like to invite Shawn Brophy from MV and Cecil Fielder from Keolis to provide their information.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ms. Quigley, and RTC staff, thank you for affording us this opportunity to speak on such an important topic this morning. My name is Shawn Brophy, I'm with MV Transportation Director of Safety and Security, and with me is...
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Cecil Fielder, Director of Safety Training and Security for Keolis Transit America, out of the Sunset Maintenance Facility.
Okay. And also, I would like to take this opportunity to compliment the RTC staff for having such a fine and a professional safety and security team, one of the finest that I've had the opportunity to work with in my career. So with that, I want to go on to the first slide.
Is this you?
Back up one more. Okay. To begin with, here are some of the images of where the rules and regulations are posted on the, onboard the vehicles, including the rider alerts, fare policies, the prices, the must-pay fare signs, the decals, rules for riding, operator assault warnings, and transit guides.
This slide, here are the disruptive and illegal behavior scenarios that occur onboard vehicles and at the transit facility. Customer refusing to pay the fare, passenger versus passenger altercation, passenger versus operator altercation. In these events, we train operators on protocol processes in the event of these occurrences.
It is the goal of MV and Keolis to help protect passengers, Keolis, MV, and RTC staff, the general public, and the RTC assets in the event of an incident. How to handle disruptive passengers is something that's discussed during new employee orientation and through customer service training and emergency procedure training. The idea is to keep the interaction with customers pleasant, understanding, and calm in tone, while trying to understand and meet the needs of the customer. Operators are taught not to escalate any discussion with angry customers, but rather to state the policy and inform the passengers of their expectations. If the situation escalates, the operator is to call the Bus Operations Center, with the BOC, to request assistance. All of these are efforts to address the needs of the customer with the skills designed to keep the customer situation from escalating.
Ongoing refresher training in handling of illegal and disruptive behavior occurs during company safety meetings, safety tailgate meetings, ride checks, and periodically using memorandums.
Okay. The disruptive and illegal behavior process follows the RTC illegal and disruptive behavior guidelines, and that is based on the trespass guidelines, NRS 207.200, Nevada Trespass Law. Trespassers may be, may not be applicable in all situations, but to enforce a trespass, there must be posted signage indicating the offense and penalty in the RTC's facilities, the bus shelters, and stops. First offense, suspect is usually issued a verbal warning, depending on the situation and severity. The officer may issue a written warning and/or Metro be called. Suspect is removed from property for 24 hours, could lead to arrest, depending again on the circumstances. Officer notes this on the shift operating report, with the SOR, and the information is also placed on the trespass log. Second offense follows the same guidelines as the first offense. And the third offense, same as the second offense, but Metro is immediately called and provided trespass history of the subject, and the subject is removed up to and including arrest.
To follow up on that, incident reporting process. If the situation does in fact escalate and becomes disruptive, the operator is required to call the Bus Operations Center or BOC for further assistance. A road supervisor and possibly law enforcement, depending on the scenario, is dispatched to respond and assist. A road supervisor can remove a disruptive passenger from the system for 20, up to 24 hours. A more serious encounter is handled by law enforcement and then forwarded on to the RTC for further legal actions. A high percentage of operator assaults are over fare, fare evasion. Our operators are trained to quote the RTC fare policy, that passengers must pay the fare, and that they are not allowed to offer free rides. As indicated in the previous slides, signage is available on the bus, the operator refers to that signage that further explains the policy. The operator is to state the policy only one time, refer to the signage, and if the passenger refuses to pay the fare, let the passenger have a seat and inform the passenger to have their fare during the next ride. If the passenger is a repeat offender, the operator must notify BOC, Bus Operations Center, and notify for further instructions. Training in this regard is reiterated several times throughout the year during safety meetings.
So that concludes their presentation on their, the operator's policies, if you have any questions for them.
Commissioner Gee, gentlemen?
Sorry, gentlemen. Okay, so we don't call them citations, we call it a trespass log? Is that the term? And where, is that log kept on every bus and then it's turned in to management then at the end of each shift? Or how does that work?
The log is kept by Allied Barton and...
Who's, okay, that's all right. So...
And it is a trespass citation, it's a trespass law.
So it's recognized as one by Metro? The log is? So you don't have to go back through he said, she said, or they didn't put my name on the list right, or something along those lines?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's for first offense, second offense, and then third, Metro is called?
That's correct.
Okay. And do they not ever show up, or is it, do they respond to your calls?
They respond.
Okay. And then, the issue of being allowed to ride, if they refuse to pay their fare, and I understand you don't want to get into an altercation, so it's, here's the rule, there's the sign. I think you might want to think about having people then get to ride, because then you're going to escalate confrontation possibly. It's, I'd be calling somebody then to have them escorted off, because otherwise you're reinforcing... Okay, I guess maybe. But I wouldn't want to reinforce bad behavior, and now they get the ride, and then you put them at the risk of being in another altercation with the operator. And that really may be something you probably want to look at policy-wise and see if there's a better way to maybe look at that part of it. And then, you have, what was the term? Quite, people that ride to watch? What's, you had a group that was...
Agent.
No, 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 I think you have staff sometimes that rides to see, if you get complaints on certain routes. What's that called?
Ride checks.
Ride check, thank you. And that's done by a supervisor or just a staff person?
Supervisor.
Okay. And then that way, it's if, if they say, hey, I'm on log number with this person, before they become deemed habitual, they can ask that that occur? They don't get in trouble as operators then for having that, because that's not their fault, it's the ridership part? So there's no citations or whatever you guys do on that part of it? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't mean to be disrespectful in any way, shape, or form, and your presentation was fine, and you can throw up charts, and this is the procedures, and this is everything that we're doing, and putting signs on the bus, but reality is not that. I mean, what, I want to know, and you guys probably know what routes, both service providers, what routes are the most challenging when it comes to drivers and passenger safety? And I imagine, Ms. Quigley, you have an Allied Barton officer on those routes, because I've seen them hopping on and off the buses from time to time. So I imagine that's the case. But, you know, you can have safety meetings and safety checks and great programs and great employee orientation stuff, but that's not the reality of that driver out there on a tough route in a tough part of the valley with tough passengers. I mean, that's just not the reality of it. And I want to know how you guys are addressing that? Other than Allied Barton keeping a list of me, or I'm 86th off the bus and I can't ride anymore? Because not all the drivers know that.
And when they're done with their presentation, we're going to ask Jerry Keating, who's head of our...
Okay, am I getting ahead of my question?
No, it's a great opening for him.
Perfect opening for Mr. Keating then. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll address your question first, before I begin the presentation. When we are made aware that there are issues going on, on certain routes, first and foremost, we meet with Allied Barton on a weekly basis, we meet with our contractors, security staff on a monthly basis, we evaluate all the statistics, we then deploy our staff out to those high-risk areas. We do them what we, what we term as saturations. So that's why, that's how we're able to cut down on some of those issues. The difficulty that the RTC faces is that you have to balance the amount of funds, unfortunately, that are spent with, you know, what type of issues you're dealing with out there. When we started the program, and I guess I'll go on to the first slide, when we started the program in 2006, we had $2.6 million in our budget for 26 officers with WAC and Hut GS4. At the end of the contract, more towards 2010, I believe, we had 37 officers that were, that were handling all of these bus routes, not only the bus routes, but our facilities as well. Since we've created the contracts with Allied Barton in 2010, we started with $3.3 million. We had 40 officers initially on the account. Currently, there are 112 officers on the account, so you can see that we've increased the account. We've also increased the budget upwards of $5 million for the security that we're providing on our system. You know, basically, the drivers are told to advise, unquote, the transit rules. That's all they're told to do. You know, basically, when we send Allied Barton out, they're, they're advised to tell the customers what the rules are, and they are allowed to enforce the transit rules. When the enforcement gets a little out of control for them to handle, we certainly contact Metro. It's not our intent to contract Metro every time, because as we all realize, the, the resources that Metro have are quite stretched at this point. But they are there when we need them to be there. Basically, you know, for assistance, for the driver's assistance, for the passenger's assistance, you know, the driver contacts the Bus Operations Center. The Bus Operations Center contacts Allied Barton and/or Metro, depending on, you know, the severity of the incident. Allied Barton does have the availability to issue trespass tickets. Those trespass tickets are then discussed with Metro, who then can permanently trespass an employee from a facility and/or a bus. They have the authority to do that for a permanent, permanent suspension. We did do some, we did check some fare evasion and operator assault policies with, with Denver, Santa Clara, and Phoenix, to give, give everybody an idea of what those are. They all have contracted security in their areas. And in some of the areas, operator assaults are less, because they have a greater security budget, and they're able to have more officers on more routes and on more buses, where in other areas, basically, they have no assaults of their drivers. And I believe Phoenix is the one that I'd refer to, because their drivers are enclosed in a Plexiglas case. And in our jurisdiction, we hear pluses and minuses about the Plexiglas case, on, some drivers enjoy it, because they don't want to be bothered by the passengers, and other, other drivers and operators want the interaction with the customers. But that is certainly something that, that we are aware of. I believe it in New York yesterday, I got a report in, in New York, in Long Island Transit yesterday, they're looking over the next five years of deploying Plexiglas, Plexiglas cases for all of their operators in an effort to reduce operator assaults. So with that, I'll be more than happy to handle any of your questions or, or directions.
Commissioner.
Thank you. All right, so Allied Barton is who we contract with for the security components, right?
Yes.
And we're up to 112 security officers?
Yes.
Where are they deployed?
They're deployed on various routes, they're deployed at the various facilities, so...
How many are on routes versus facilities?
The majority of them are on routes, the facilities are very small.
Maybe we can get a breakout of that?
Okay.
And then, we know where our frequent flyer problem areas are, which routes, correct? So do we have officers assigned to all shifts, or whatever's necessary for, onto those buses?
In, in the past, we had not, in an effort to maintain the budget and trying to get the most bang for our buck, we did not always have officers on the late-night shifts, because the passenger per service hour is very small, very small percentage. Since that time, we have looked at it and we've deployed officers around the clock. We are also in the process of taking our fare enforcement officers that are unarmed and working with Allied Barton to change the fare enforcement officers to more armed officers out on the routes, where they will handle both fare enforcement and security, so we can deploy more officers out on the street. That is, that is certainly the goal of the RTC and our security team headed out by Tamara Williams and Judy Lopez, who, who do a great job and, and work very well with our contractors.
So how many fare enforcement officers do we have?
Minimal, 30 or 40.
Okay, and that's separate from the Allied Barton?
No, that's part of.
That's part of their contract?
Correct.
So maybe what might, at least would help me is, how many are fare enforcement? How many are, I hate that we have armed, but how many are armed? Where are they assigned? What routes have been identified as problem routes? And then, what are you covering on shifts? Now, in your slide, you use the term detain the person. I would never want an operator to physically have to detain a person, so...
Our officers don't.
Okay.
If they're detained, they're detained by Allied Barton?
It didn't say that.
Okay.
It says, it was under the officers thing, and it said detain person and then call? And I don't think that some, they should be saying...
You know what, our, our goal is not to put our drivers in harm's way. We don't want anybody getting hurt over $2 or $3 bus fare.
That just raised a flag in my mind when I saw it on the slide, because I wrote down how? What are you going to do? Where are we, what do we do with our cameras and our film information that we have on the buses?
Our cameras and film information are used for Metro when they need them for either prosecution or criminal investigation.
You can't trespass, only Metro can trespass, and that's the only type of thing that we can do behavior-wise for folks?
Correct.
How many trespass? How many trespassed, how many people have been trespassed?
I don't know the exact number, but I know that that's been quite a bit. But I will get the number for you.
See if we can find out how many have been trespassed because if that's, I think we'd need to make sure that Metro sees the seriousness of it once you get to that part. But those cameras, that camera information could be used for a variety of things.
Yes.
And maybe even posting their picture on the face of all the buses that this is a habitual and you know what, you don't get to come on my bus. Because how do you expect people from one shift or one company to another to know who's been 86ed as we used to use in the old restaurant business days? So I think that those might be some things to look at. And then on your procedure, it says they have to contact the BOC then, the BOC contacts Allied. Why would they not just contact Allied and say, listen, I got a problem here?
They have no radio community, they have no radio communication with Allied, it has to go through the Bus Operations Center who will make the call. There is no.
How long does that take?
That I don't know, I'd have to ask the contractors.
Why would we not have a number to call Allied, our security company?
Well, our bus drivers are on a radio system, not on a cellphone system.
Something to look at because you now have an intermediary step where someone, until they get a BOC to come out or respond to it, you're still sitting there waiting and then you affect your ridership and then you affect the safety for everybody else that's sitting there. Just might be something, I mean, everybody's got a cellphone, so maybe we give them the number and say, call Allied directly if that's the case and then document that part of it. But anyway, that's just food for thought of things that came up in my note. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Councilman Ross and then Councilwoman Tarkanian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Keating, what's the difference between this gentleman standing over here as an Allied Barton employee and a fare enforcement officer?
A fare enforcement officer is basically someone when the law was passed in the legislature to give us the ability to give out citations, we hired fare enforcement officers who checked people's passes to make sure that they have complied with the fare policy of the RTC. If they don't, the fare enforcement officer just asks them to leave the bus or to buy a bus pass, either one of the two. We didn't want it to be.
They're unarmed?
They are unarmed. We did not want it to be a confrontational event on one of our coaches. However, since that time and with the change in the economy and the slight increase we've seen in operator and passenger assaults, we think it's probably in our best interest to change those fare enforcement officers to armed officers that have a little more authority.
I concur, and I would think that all of the officers that are contracted with the RTC should be fare enforcement officers, not limited to, well, I'm not a fare enforcement officer.
Correct.
I think they should all be fare enforcement officers and I think they should all be armed.
Absolutely.
And you're right, you don't want anything to escalate for a $2 bus ride where someone gets hurt, that's true. But I mean, the safety and security of our operators and our passengers on some of these routes is very concerning to all of us on this board. And I think that our vendors understand that and that they're going to do their best and continue with their policies, company-wide policies, certainly, but I think they, I think, did any model look better than ours in the other cities that you looked at?
You know what, if you go out and you want to hire a transit police force that works strictly for us or for Metro, you could probably do that, but you'd be increasing your budget tenfold from what you're spending, a minimum of tenfold right now, from what you're spending right now to have a transit police force that would take care of that. And most entities are looking away from transit police forces and going with contracted security because of the cost and the ability to put more officers on their routes as opposed to less officers at a higher cost.
Okay. Jerry, maybe you know the answer to this, are all of our buses equipped with cameras?
Yes.
Every one of our buses is equipped with a camera?
Yes.
And I concur with Commissioner June Kiliani in regards to, you know, that communication has to take place. You guys are having safety meetings before, after shift and passing that data and that information on to the next crew going in. I mean, the drivers talk to each other, you know, they know who the bad guys are and who the good guys are. And that's important, that communication continue, but I think, you know, that extra step by going to the central office to make contact with security, that's a little concerning. And I don't know how you shorten that gap or take that, eliminate that right out of the process, but.
Well, we'll take that under advisement.
If I'm driving and I need that guy, I need that guy.
Absolutely, we'll take that under advisement, report back to the board what we find at that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Tarkanian.
I, Chris covered just about every question I had. I wanted to say I feel very strongly we should emphasize that you're working hard to solve a problem, but something's not working. And when something's not working, first you admit it's not working and the second thing is you tear it apart piece by piece to see what could be improved. And if we could answer the question she had, I think that will help us all as we put our heads together and try and solve it because there is a problem, what we're doing now hasn't been working. And so let's look at and get all those questions, break it down for us and maybe we can find where the problem lies that we could make the improvement. Secondly, with Councilman Ross and what he said, I believe that if we have to spend some more money, we're going to have to spend it because human life and human safety is extremely important, of course, and that's not a place where we should be cutting back at all. And then thirdly, as far as the pictures and, that might help, that might help. The only thing is, if you have the pictures and the driver knows this person shouldn't come on, what if he still tries to force his way on? Somebody, when you do this, we have to have somebody accountable for handling that situation who can handle it. And maybe somebody there with the armed weapon is what you need. He shoots more than I shoot by far, but I just say that we really have to dissect this and look at it very carefully. It's a problem that's been here a long time and we need to work hard on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Commissioner June Kiliani.
Thank you. I'm not a big fan of people carrying guns. Do they carry tasers as well?
No.
Is there a reason why? It just might be something to look at. I would want to make sure too, what does Allied pay their employees? I hope it's not minimum wage because at some point that doesn't help either.
Allied pays their armed officers $15 plus.
And benefits, health benefits?
Yes.
One thing we didn't really address and I didn't see in the safety plan is what happens if a passenger is assaulted by a fellow passenger. I know it said one line in there, but other than that, what's the procedure? I had a constituent and I think Angela helped me with it, that was assaulted and unfortunately the operator colluded with the individual. But the passenger did film it on his own camera, and then you remember this, M&amp;J. But I do think that as well as operators, you can sometimes have abuse going on. I mean, what happened is, this is a couple of years ago, but a gentleman, for lack of a better term, started harassing a woman on the bus and then someone interceded. And so I'd like to make sure that you tell us how that gets handled and what the operator is required to do when that kind of a circumstance happens.
At that point in time, the operator again is asked to call the Bus Operations Center, not get involved.
That's not soon enough, you have a passenger being harassed and then threatened and then hit? Unacceptable.
But, I understand, I understand.
I think you need, depending on the extremity or extremeness of the situation, there may be different things that are warranted and then properly training everybody for it. You know, OSHA, when we were doing all the OSHA issues, and Councilman knows this far better than I do, there was one thing we found that was a breakdown in the 24-hour was they had to, used to log out and then have a training debriefing and then the next crew logged in. And I don't know what our procedure is, but once they re-implemented that, we had far less injuries because somebody'd say, oh, there's a board here that's got this and there was this on the construction site. Once they debriefed each other and logged each other, then everybody was aware of what the potential circumstance could be. And it took 10 minutes before they went off shift. So there might be some things maybe we could glean from that, but when you mentioned that, that just triggered my memory. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks for, Commissioner, for bringing this up. Do we have anybody represented from Allied Barton here to talk about their procedures and their security protocols in regards to sharing communication from one shift to another?
We didn't ask anybody for today, but I'm thinking we'll probably need to come back to you at our next board meeting with some updates and some continued discussion on this and as part of that, we can invite them to.
Because that might help, I mean, she brings up a good topic and, you know, and I'm sure that both of our service providers have some kind of shift transition. And having family members that work for the police department, I know and been through some of these briefings before and after shifts, so they communicate from one shift to another, you know, hey, Commissioner Brown was seen down the street doing bad things and I'm leaving and you're coming on.
Yeah.
So short of hiring ninjas to come ride our buses.
You have each given us some tasks today, some additional research, some additional conversation that we need to come back to you on. So I think we'll do that next board meeting.
Okay, an update on the next board meeting is appropriate. It also, timing-wise, make sure we have this cleansed and all the facts and figures that have been asked for specifically, what type of officers, number of officers, even if salaries are an issue, going into the budget session. Because that's when, if we're going to make an adjustment.
Okay.
That's what's going to happen and that's going to be the next 30 or 60 days. So let's get all our facts and with our contractors and Allied, get everybody together and next month we can have an updated presentation. I'd just also just be cautious as far as some of the information intuitively now, some of the information we probably don't want to bring out publicly as far as this route or this time or this bus. We don't want to create an attractive target, so just balance that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions, that concludes your general manager's report. And our next agenda item is to hear from Rudy Malafon, Director of Nevada Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Tina. Just to mention in line with discussion previously about minority and women-owned firms and contracting with those groups, I wanted to mention a bit of an update on that good faith effort review process which Angela covered and Tina covered. Administrative reconsideration is kind of that appeal process when we have a goal that's not met in our contracts on these federal aid projects. NDOT has decided, because we have a race, what's called a race-conscious DBE program, meaning we have those goals in there, you have to meet them in our procurements, that we're going to keep that in-house. And so this is a newer process that came about last year and so we're kind of learning as we've implemented this and ran into that issue with the North Las Vegas advertised project that is now re-advertised. So the other thing I wanted to mention is Federal Highway Administration is going to provide some training down here in Southern Nevada, April 3rd for contractors and April 15th for local agencies and their procurement staff to get up to speed on federal requirements for the DBE program and answer and respond to questions from both contractors and the local agency partners down here. We'll get more information on the venues and locations and times. Recently, a couple of weeks ago, I visited our delegation in Washington DC and also an opportunity to hear from some of the leaders nationally in the transportation program. Secretary of Transportation Fox addressed us as a group of DOTs across the nation and he talked about the release of the current round of Tiger Grants, 600 million I think is available. And he talked about President Obama's proposed $302 billion transportation budget. That's over a four-year timeframe for transportation, so transit is included in that as well as highways and rail. The issue though is that the President, although he talked about tax reform as one option to pay for some of that increase in the transportation budget that was proposed, Congress has to take action on a transportation bill this year before MAP 21 expires on September 30th. The big issue also is that the current spending levels that have been given to the state DOTs is going to run the Highway Trust Fund at the federal level into the red around the same timeframe that the bill expires. So it's currently, the feds collect 18.4 cents per gallon on fuel tax on gasoline and that gets into, deposited in the Highway Trust Fund. Because Congress initially, when they approved the transportation bill that we're currently operating under, they increased the spending levels that, more than the revenue coming in. So the fund had a little bit of balance to start with two years ago, but the bad news is it's going to run into the red. So we talked to our delegation about the importance of passing a long-term transportation bill. We would love to see a four- to six-year bill, but a two-year bill would suit our purposes of giving us some assurance of how much federal funding we're going to receive. Bottom line is, if something doesn't happen and Congress doesn't provide, address that revenue gap, then we have to cut our federal projects in the next federal fiscal year, 2015. So it's an important issue, it creates concerns on loss of jobs, unable to address safety issues and mobility issues on our transportation system and also that important issue of economic development. We also, while we were in Washington DC, had the opportunity to present a joint presentation with Arizona DOT and our, Sandra Rosenberg, our project manager on the Interstate 11 and Intermountain West Corridor Study. Large contingent was there from Southern Nevada, Tom Skankie was representing the Las Vegas Global Economic Alliance, Ms. McMillan was there from the Las Vegas Metro Chamber of Commerce, a lot of folks from the local agencies present and a huge amount of staffers from both states for Congress and congressmen and senators had their staffers available. So we had a large room to present what this study is, where we're at, what they're looking at in both the Arizona side and the Nevada side. We've also previously extended the public meeting period for what we talked about last month with that alternative on the east side of the valley. We had a lot of comments, both supportive and concerning comments about that eastern valley alternative that we had a graphic on last month. But the idea that we have is to not prematurely exclude an alternative, let's do some additional studying. This is a very high-level corridor study with a lot of work to be done. So the next phase would be looking at specific corridors and then eventually doing an environmental impacts statement because it's such a large project and it has huge impacts to the environment and to the population. So, and just to give you a sense of what these large EISs take, it takes about five to six years to do an environmental impact statement and that has to get approved by the feds. So we have a lot of time to get public input. I wanted to mention that the website, the I11study.com website still has opportunity for people to connect to a link and provide comments on the study. The, another issue that came up on our current construction project, we had advertised a project for our first construction phase of a frontage road for I-11. What happened was we became aware fairly recently about a study by UNLV researchers on naturally occurring asbestos. There was a front-page story December 26th in a local newspaper and we became aware of that after we came back from our holiday vacations and had our little present to open up of, you know, being faced with having to look at how we can investigate, assure that we're ourselves, that we're protecting the public's health interests and the worker safety issues between NDOT and our contractors that will be working on this area. So what NDOT is doing currently is we rescinded the advertisement for bids for that frontage road project. We anticipate hiring a consultant similar to what RTC of Southern Nevada has done with Kleinfelter doing some testing. We're going to, Kleinfelter is in the running from the three proposals that we received from private companies to do an assessment of naturally occurring asbestos on the, within the project limits. We will make that determination hopefully next week and enter into, our Transportation Board approved us entering into a contract with that firm so we don't have to wait until the April Transportation Board meeting to approve that contract. So we're going to try to do that as rapidly as possible. Because our projects were design-bid-build, which is a traditional low-bid process, the project's already designed and advertised for bids in that process, that's different from the RTC's method of design-build. So it really, I think because the RTC's schedule for their design-build procurement is different from ours, it really won't have as much effect on RTC's project as it is on ours. We have to actually rescind that advertisement for bids. And we're looking at combining that frontage road project with the larger mainline construction project that was scheduled to be advertised later this late summer. So in terms of schedule delays to the NDOT project, we anticipate maybe a few months difference. The concern is that it does push our mainline. difference. The concern is that it does push our mainline construction project for I-11, for our phase, into the next federal fiscal year when we don't have that assurance of federal funding. So we'll have to address that issue and watch closely what congressional action gets taken on the next transportation bill. We also will work closely with the Clark County Department of Air Quality to make sure that we're taking the proper steps to protect public health and worker safety. Air monitoring is part of the process when we're dealing with a naturally occurring asbestos. And we have looked into a lot of other projects, highway-type projects that have been built around this naturally occurring material in California and other states. It's something that we're not, I mean, because we have stringent requirements for dust control for air quality reasons in Clark County, I don't think it's gonna be anything too different from what we do. It's just gonna acquire additional monitoring and identification of what we actually have out there. NDOT actually did a project where some asbestos material, man-made material, was dumped on the highway corridor way back in the, after World War II. We found it later when we were building our highway down there by Lake Mead Parkway in Henderson. And we cleaned it up. We just had to do additional watering and dust control and clean off the truck tires before they traveled onto the asphalt pavement. So it's something that we ran into. A little different issue now with naturally occurring, but similar mitigation measures to be taken with controlling dust and making sure that our workers are protected. One of the backup plan that we have to use the federal funds that we're going to, the I-11 project, is to accelerate the construction project at US 95 and the 250 Beltway, that system-to-system interchange in the Northwest. So we can use that funding as a backup plan. That project will construct a, if you're on 95 North and heading east on the Beltway, it'll build that ramp. And if you're headed west on the Beltway to go south on US 95, it'll construct that ramp. So that's our backup plan. And I'm willing to answer any questions.
Comments or questions? Commissioner June Caliani.
Sorry. Okay, so five to six years to do an EIS, and this has been in the process, right? Is the EIS in place then for that whole corridor?
Oh, no. It's, what we would do is, we have those three alternatives that were shown. We would have to do corridor studies to get more definitive on what the alternatives are within those three corridors where there are some constraints, environmental issues. And then you would enter into, after that corridor study's done, which usually take a few years for each of those, they could be done concurrently, but you have to look at available funding. After the corridor study's done, then you go and do an environmental impact study to do, because this is such a large project, that would be the level, the degree of investigation required would be the highest level, EIS.
And that's for the frontage road component, correct?
No, the frontage road, let me clarify that the environmental impact study for the current construction project of Boulder City Bypass was completed and approved in December of 2005. So we're good on that.
But you might have to amend that based on the asbestos issue.
We may have to revisit that because of the asbestos issue. We're working with Federal Highway Administration to determine what level of
Mitigation.
mitigation is required, and whether we have to reopen that environmental document or whether it's, because we're gonna be looking at what requirements we're gonna put in our contract, that might be sufficient for Federal Highway Administration to address the issue that we find out there. We might, we might not find any within the corridor. It's just that the UNLV study had a very large area. They did a very few amount of samples to identify it. We have to be specific.
Right. And I do appreciate that both NDOT and RTC has hired independent, whatever we call, studies, so that we can verify that. Because I think some people tend to, with no disrespect, poo-poo environmental issues. And I don't think we should ignore that. And so doing our due diligence on the front end does not put that job at risk. And I think that's the key piece, because you don't want to be halfway down and feds say, forget it, you didn't do your job, and you're stuck halfway with the roadway and half your investment done, and it sits there. So I think, I appreciate that you're doing that part. I read through this study. I know that it's point one in most places. There are some point twos, and mostly where your hill is, where you may have to deal with that part of it. So that's where the dust factor and the mitigation may be more impactful than the RTC's. But I would hate to see RTC just start its thing and then you can't do your connection. What good is that? I'd rather put the money into streets. Second thing is, I look at, I have my little map here. Yours ends almost at the 515 in Boulder Highway. Have you looked at whether or not Boulder Highway should maybe be wide interchange and rather than doing those other three routes that are being discussed that got people up in arms over in the Henderson area? And I just throw that out. I don't know, but I know engineers like to build stuff, and sometimes they don't like to go back and look at what they already built, see if maybe that makes better sense, rather than doing the difficult route. So I just throw that out there, because you have a ton of right-of-way on that highway. And you could maybe do truck lanes. I don't even know what the purpose is, but that just might be another thing as you're analyzing it to take a look at. It just kind of popped out at me. I am not an engineer, and I totally respect what you all are doing. The fuel tax is due in the twelve and a half miles of the RTC, correct? And then the, your portion, Rudy, was how was that funded? That's through the Federal Highway Fund?
Yes, we are using federal funds for our portion.
Okay. And so how much do you have so far in the bank for your portion of it?
We were planning on using, in total, about a hundred and twenty-five million dollars of
And that will complete your leg, then?
Yes.
Okay. So you don't have to be dependent on the next budget cycle that's coming in from the feds on that. You'll at least be able to complete that. So maybe if we do hopefully get some new infrastructure dollars, it's not necessary for this. We could do it for other roadway projects.
The issue with the federal funding was that we receive a certain limit of funds each federal fiscal year.
Right.
And if it pushes us into the next fiscal year, 2015, for the feds, that's where we don't have the assurance of availability of funds for new projects. We have, they've already obligated or basically committed to paying the bills on, let's say we had a two-year project that carries over into next year. They've obligated the funds and they're receiving revenue that would pay for those existing projects, but it's a significant new projects that would be at risk if there's no new transportation bill. We could also look at other alternative funding mechanisms available to the state to fund that project.
And then we have, we have alternate, we have all the right-of-way for the I-11 at this point?
We are, NDOT is in the process of acquiring three parcels. We're, two of the three parcels were having good negotiations. And one of the cases, we are going to be going to court as an eminent domain action and inverse condemnation case. As far as the RTC portion, I did get a chance to talk to Victor Mendez, who's the Deputy Secretary of Transportation, about getting the land transfer from the Park Service to the FHWA to RTC. And I had a conference call with the higher-ups there from FHWA. They said that it's imminent, so it's on its way.
Okay, good. That was gonna lead to my next question. So Fred, you're confident with that part of it, then?
Yeah, we're confident with that. And on our project, we have three parcels. The MPS parcel that he mentioned about, we also have Boulder City and Western Area Power Administration. Those two other parcels, we have already secured. The board has already approved them. So hopefully by the next board meeting, we'll have an agenda for you guys to approve the last and remaining parcel.
How big is the MP, the Park Service one, parcel-wise?
It runs through about two mile stops.
Would they want to trade for National Golf Course for that? And I'm serious. It's up for sale, and I'd rather protect it as a green space. Just food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ross.
Thank you. And Commissioner, I get quite frustrated with the bureaucratic process and these things taking years to accomplish. It just drives me nuts. And, I mean, even widening US 95 that already exists and adding an additional lane has to have an environmental impact statement. And when I first heard that, I said, why? There's already a highway there. How insensitively are we going to impact the environment by adding another lane? But it's required for those federal dollars. And that just drives me nuts because of that. I want to throw this at you, Rudy, with the chairman's permission. Yesterday's LVCBA meeting, we had a fabulous presentation by Mr. Skankie about transportation, transportation needs in Southern Nevada. And of course, the I-15 corridor was brought up, and I brought up the I-15 corridor of the Arizona Strip. That strip serves, does not serve Arizona or Mojave County one bit, but it does Southern Nevada. And I think one of these days, especially because the bridges there, the Burge River Gorges are being reconstructed or hopefully beginning reconstructed, because I understand they're in pretty bad condition. But that's affecting the economy and commerce in Mesquite. And I would think that's affecting our commerce as well, because ADOT has decided to do the construction in the middle of the day, regular day work hours, when people are trying to go back and forth to Utah or head north on I-15 and, or come south on I-15 to Las Vegas. And that's having an impact on our economy, I think. I certainly get comments about that quite a bit, people who get stuck in traffic. I think Ms. Quigley was just stuck in traffic there not too long ago on a recent family trip to Utah. But that's significant. I think that we're gonna have to have that bigger discussion as a county, and perhaps as NDOT, in regards to taking that over and have some kind of, some kind of agreement with Arizona, that you know what, we can better maintain it. It's more valuable to our economy than it is to yours. You know, they were once talking about making it a toll road for their financial benefit. You know, how would that have affected our economy and jobs in Southern Nevada? You know, that's not a good idea. So I'm just throwing that out there, because it's a much larger discussion, I'm sure. But I think we, as in transportation, need to be thinking in that direction. Why does Greg have a grin on his face?
Greg says, why stop there? Let's just take over all of Arizona.
I'm good with that, Greg. Don't get me started on annexations.
I know that, Rudy, and NDOT and ADOT have had, and UDOT have had several conversations regarding that particular Arizona Strip.
Yes, we, and in fact, when we were back there in DC, we talked about that small strip of the corner of Arizona that doesn't really serve a lot of Arizona residents, but it's part of the, an important corridor. It's our lifeline, you know, to points east. And we talked about, because we have a coalition of, between California, Nevada, Arizona, because of that little corner of that state, and Utah, that look at supporting each other's projects on the I-15 corridor. That one, I think, did receive, the funding for that current project was a Tiger grant, I believe, or another federal grant. But we do know that that's very important. It is unfortunate that it's delaying traffic, because they have to do a significant amount of basically redoing the whole tops portion of the bridge, the superstructure. So that, not just the deck, but the actual corridors are in bad shape, too. So a lot of work to be done. And that was just the first pair of bridges, I think, that they're working on. So they have several more pairs to do.
Chairman, I think that's significant. If you're already having those conversations, especially in Washington DC, and then with our surrounding partners in the desert southwest, I think that's significant. But it would benefit Southern Utah and Utah in general, as well as our economy here. So I think if you, you know, I would encourage you, I'm only one voice on this board, but I would encourage you to continue those conversations, because I think it's so vitally important to Utah and Nevada that we help Arizona out. But I'm with Greg, too. I think we should just take over Arizona entirely.
Everything's a count.
We'll do that at the next board.
At the next board meeting. Can we get an agenda item for that, please? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Rudy.
Thank you.
But I think the councilman brings up a good point, Rudy. The fact that ADOT may not be as motivated as NDOT or UDOT to make sure that the hours of operation, or hours of construction are not necessarily, are not having a significant impact to the movement of goods and commerce.
Well, just to add, we will have an opportunity to, we were invited to a signing event that ADOT coordinated for signing their portion of their Highway 93 as a future I-11 corridor. And they're gonna be doing that event with both governors present a week from this Friday down at the Hoover Dam Visitor Center. So I know that my counterpart, John Halakowski from ADOT, will be there. So we'll continue those discussions.
No other questions? We can move on to item number four, which is to conduct your first comment period for citizens' participation.
Was the director done?
Oh, sorry.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I have to leave to go get to an 11 o'clock conference call, so may I be excused?
But I have a couple questions for you. No, I'll wait for next month. You gave us enough information.
Thank you.
I do know that strip of Arizona takes care of a lot of the Highway Patrol citation quota. So I'm not sure. They'll want to give that.
Right.
Yeah. I think on behalf of the board, Rudy, you're dismissed, without prejudice.
Item number four is your first citizens' participation period.
This is time set aside for anyone wishing to speak on a specific agenda item posted today. I do have one card. Sam Santoria on item number 27. Please state your name for the record, and comments will be limited to three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Sam Santoria, Vice President of ATU Local 1637. I had a comment here. My president wanted me to read, because he cannot make the meeting. And I'm deciding reading, not reading this. So I'm just gonna hold off for general comments for something else. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak under this public comment period on a specific agenda item? And good morning.
Good morning. How are you? The item number is gonna be security. I wasn't gonna speak this morning, but they raised my blood pressure on a few things. As far as our security on the buses goes, when you are told to call BLC, BLC decides as to what's gonna happen, whether you're gonna continue en route, they'll send a supervisor to meet you en route when you have hostile passengers on the bus. First of all, it takes you, depending on the time of day and what else is going on, there's three people back in BLC with a bunch of bus drivers out here. So depending on what's going on, it could take anywhere from ten minutes to thirty minutes to even get a response from BLC. When you call them and explain the situation, they want details. You don't have time to give them all the details. You're trying to give them the specific of what's going on right now, the urgency in it, and to get somebody out here. Well, they want you to give them this, that, and the others. Like, look, get somebody out here, let them deal with this. What do you want me to do? Depending on what the situation is, they'll tell you, continue en route, and we'll have a supervisor meet you. That's not good when you have hostile passengers on the bus. That's a very unsafe environment for us drivers. We're put in this position every single day. And it's not fair to us. So you're talking about your security aspect and what they're talking about, how we're to handle it, are two different things that go on. I'm a driver. I know. I've had this happen where I had two passengers upstairs on my double-decker harassing a whole floor of passengers. I called BLC. They took too long. I stepped to the side, get out of my bus. I called them on my cellphone. They pick up immediately. I tell them what's going on. They're like, open all your doors. And I'm gonna make an announcement that we're calling Metro. They're not calling Metro. That's just the threat they make to get the people off the bus. That's not cool. If I tell you I have passengers up there that are harassing a whole floor of people, and it's becoming a very hostile environment where you have people ready to jump on these people, I've got a racial fight getting ready to jump off on my bus, and you're making a threat of calling Metro? That's not good. I can call Metro myself and get a faster response than having to go through BLC. Because sometimes you're waiting a while to hear from BLC. You're not getting an immediate call from them, because they have other bus routes, which is understandable. But they have other bus drivers in other routes, and they categorize them as to priority. So you need supervisor. They don't know what's going on. You just need a supervisor. You know, so I'm just explaining as a driver what goes on. As far as Allied Barton, I work graveyard. I might see them once a week on the bus. They'll ride three stops and they hop off. They don't ride like they should ride to catch all the craziness. It's like they want to ride the good area, which is going westbound. But anything eastbound, they don't want to deal with. Eastbound is your problem.
Thank you. And would you, and I apologize, would you put your name on the record if you did not to start?
Mickey, easily. But you know who I am.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Hodges, do you have a specific agenda item? If not, we'll save you for the end of the day. We'll save the best for last.
We have the United States going home, right? I'll wait.
Thank you.
Can I comment on the security issue? That wasn't an agenda item?
It wasn't?
It wasn't.
Okay. Well, Sam, would you, I'll give you, I'll give you some discretion at the end of the meeting if you want to do both subjects.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing and hearing no one else, we'll close this portion of public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of your commission. Your next agenda items constitute your consent agenda and are made up of items five through 26. I'd like to point out that five of them are related to fuel tax indexing and, yes.
How many, I'm sorry?
Five.
Five?
Yep.
Very nice. Motion on the floor for approval on the consent. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 27 will be handed to Citizens and General Manager here.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Item 27 is to evaluate the performance of the General Manager for the period of January 1, 2013 through December 31, 2013, and to formulate any recommendations on management goals and objectives for 2014, as well as to adjust any compensation taken as deemed necessary by the board. On November 14, 2013, the RTC appointed RTC Commissioners Larry Brown, Chris June Kiliani, Councilwoman Deborah March, and Mayor Mark Weir to serve on an evaluation committee to review the performance of the General Manager. Mayor Tobler of Boulder City was appointed to serve as an alternate on that committee. On June 29, 2014, the Appointed Evaluation Committee met, uh, with the members of Councilwoman March, Commissioner June Kiliani, and Mayor Tobler, evaluated the 2013 performance of General Manager Quigley and providing, and provided her, as well as the board, guidance for the next evaluation period. The committee recommendations are presented at the, uh, may be presented at the May 13, 2014, meeting by the RTC Board of County Commissioners. Uh, it's turned over to you for your action.
Thank you, and I'll defer to Mayor Tobler or Commissioner G. Are you ready for a motion, please?
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we extend the contract for Tina Quigley for three years, that we provide her with a 1,500 a month for general expenses. I think that was up from a thousand before, and then a 3% merit increase.
Is a motion on the floor, comments or questions?
I had, I had a question. Uh, on the 1,500 a month, what does that include in expenses?
That, that 1,500 dollars is for non-personal job-related expenses, uh, for conferences, for dinners that she has to attend, for employee incentive lunches that she has to pay for, as opposed to paying it out of her pocket. In the past, we would ask Jacob Snow to either pay for it out of his pocket or be reimbursed by the RTC. What we did is we just codified that so that, uh, the General Manager knew what her expense amount was per month and what her limit was, um, as designated by her, her contract.
So that doesn't include, uh, a car, transportation, or anything?
No, that's already included in her original contract. This is just an addendum, and she was given a thousand dollars, uh, again, not personal job-related expenses. This is just an increase to 1,500 dollars. We know that other jurisdictions in the valley give their, uh, city managers upwards of $2,000 for that, and, and we wanted to minimize that impact, as well as the committee wanted to minimize that impact on the RTC, uh, budget.
So I thought maybe they were paying her, so she'd have to go to these things for... Sorry about that. That's a joke. But then the 1,500 is common, uh, within the valley for what other jobs?
1,500 is actually less than what, um, you know, the, the other jurisdictions in the valley are paying, yes.
Paying their CMO.
They're paying their CMO for...
I'll have to go check to see what we're paying our CMO. Do you know?
You, you are not. The city of Las Vegas does not, but Clark County is paying $2,000 to Don Burnett, uh, for, again, non, non-personal job-related expenses, so that person does not have to take those expenses out of their pocket.
It, it's just sad that a person would have to spend that much in non-job-related, uh, in job-related expenses.
Now, she, she does not.
18,000 a year, is that 15, no? 18?
That, that is right. That is 18,000. That would be up to 18,000 dollars. However, those expenses, uh, need to be turned in via receipt, uh, to the Finance Department, who, uh, checks them and then cuts a check to Ms. Quigley.
Yeah. My questions are based upon the fact we haven't had that through the city, and so I'm not familiar with this. And, um, so probably what you did was figure out an amount going on the previous, uh, person's, uh, cost per month, and then just did it from there.
Absolutely. And then with the, uh, interest of, of, uh, the increase that has come up this year, we, we just asked for that allowance, up to 1,500 dollars. Ms. Quigley doesn't spend anywhere near that.
Oh, it's up to 15?
It's up to 1,500 dollars per month. Not a maximum, not a guarantee. Receipts have to be turned in to, uh, to demonstrate the expenses that were incurred during that monthly period.
I just think that, uh, the way it reads 1,500 monthly expense account, and also in the back it reads similarly, uh, just for the public's perception of what's happening, it might be good to say up to 1,500 dollars.
Okay, and I think...
Because I know, I'll, I'll get some questions on this if this comes out.
I think if the mayor wants to change his motion, he probably could. It is up to 1,500 dollars. Like I said, she has not hit the maximum amount of that, but we are just trying to stay consistent with what the county, the school district give their, uh, chief executive officers.
And, and I, I have no objection to that. I'm just saying that the way it's written, it looks automatically like that, and some, uh, a, a person who maybe just earns a little more than that per month would question that. And, uh, I just think if you say up to, then there's an understanding that every job-related expense that's not covered is then covered through this expense account, and it's not automatic. I just think public's perception there, it, it's an important thing.
Absolutely, I, and...
Especially if the buses break down and everything's, everybody's mad at her, then they'll pick on that.
When we were in the committee, we did talk about, do we base it on a per month, or is it really based or capped per annual? And we, we kinda liked the idea of the annual cap, which we could still do up to annually. I, I don't know the best way to do it. Uh, I, I don't really care one way or the other, but we, we did have that conversation. We felt like there might be some months that she might need a little more than other months, so it was based more on an annual, which, uh, even though it shows 1,500 a month.
And it could be, excuse me if I just might add, it could be up to annually an average of 1,500 a month, or something like that. Whatever you, I don't mind that. It's just, uh, that I think that it's important that people know it's just not an automatic because I have seen situations where that has been questioned very heavily in other groups, and I just think that makes it very clear that we're covering her for hard costs that she has to pay that are not covered, and it's not just an automatic.
The, Councilwoman, these are not automatic, uh, this is not an auto, automatic amount. In her original, um, in her original contract, it said up to a thousand dollars. Receipts have to be turned in to be verified. Uh, and again, she hasn't touched that. So if you want, I think you're probably right. In the, in the committee, we did talk about a maximum amount of 18,000 dollars because the, the fact that there are probably months that those can fluctuate. Uh, but again, uh, Ms. Quigley hasn't come anywhere, uh, you know, to, to where she's reached that amount.
Right, and quite honestly, she's worth every penny of it. I'm just saying, I'm talking about the perception of the public that sometimes questions what this group does and questions it heavily. As far as salaries, uh, maybe you've budgeted so well that you're in much better condition than other groups, but I'm just talking about the public perception of it. I, myself, know she isn't spending that, uh, on an average, but does the person who reads about it in the paper understand that?
Mr. Chair.
I think Chris wanted to say something.
I, I think I might be able to, if the mayor wishes to say not, uh, fif, an average of 1,500 dollar monthly expense account not to exceed 18,000 dollars a year. And I think that captures both concerns, but as long as receipts are required, this, we're leading into a legislative year where not only Ms. Quinnley, but we're gonna expect our county manager to be unfortunately having to schmooze a whole bunch of people, and so sometimes I don't think people should have to pay for that out of their pocket. We do. Uh, I've never put in for reimbursement. I don't think any of the council or commissioners have, so...
No, we haven't.
And we get paid less than that. That's not the point. That is what we have as an expectation for them as management. So maybe that'll accomplish if that's acceptable to you in the motion, um, to accommodate both concerns.
And I agree with that, and I, I understand it. I'm just saying that most people, I feel the average citizen, would not understand it.
And, and I'm okay with amending my motion.
The way it was written, I mean.
With that, Mr. Chair, I, I do think it's important for people to understand this isn't something that's added to her salary. It's not automatically given to her, and that's the difference. And I think in some of the businesses, maybe that's the case, where they're, that, that's part of their salary structure and everything else. That hasn't been the case with us. So it's, it's through reimbursement. So, but I'm, I'm happy to amend the motion with the recommendation there.
All right.
And I just want to reemphasize, I have no question about her ability and her deserving it. I want you to know that, and you know that, I think. I, I just don't want this, this to come, uh, backfire on us in any way, uh, when we're going into other things that are really important and get any negativity.
Mr. Chair, I, I thought I, do you mind while the motion, I, I know it, we, we still have that on the table, but I did wanna point out that during these committees, we, we do review quite a bit, and, and I don't think necessarily the whole board gets to see that. But just speaking for myself, I think Tina has accomplished a lot in taking over from another very strong leader before her. I think she has stepped in, she's done a great job, and is continuing even doing better things as we're moving forward. So, uh, I think that was, I don't wanna put the words in the mouth of the committee, but I think we all felt that way as we're, uh, coming up with these recommendations for the board.
Thank you. We have an amended motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, your next item is item 28, which is your final citizens' participation period.
This is our second time set aside for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to the board, please come down, state your name for the record, and we'd appreciate your comments. Be limited to three minutes. Good morning, Mr. Hodges.
Good, good morning, Mr. Chair. You, you, you make me almost wanna leap out of the building, but anyway...
No, no one's leaving. Everyone's staying for your talk today.
What I really wanna actually talk about is that...
And would you introduce yourself?
Oh, my name is Anthony Hodges. I'm sorry about that. Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, uh, our transportation system here in, in Clark County or whatever, is one of the worst, farthest, where the people get on the bus in the whole nation. I mean, sometimes you can go a half a block down the street before you get to the place where, you know, where you go to, to get on the bus. So you, most bus stops are generally close to the corner, you know, in most places. But here in Nevada, you can actually walk over a hundred and some feet, or even further, you know, for, to get to the actual place where you sit down to catch the bus. You know what I'm saying? And I, I feel that's very unfair, 'cause you got a lot of people that are handicapped and, and, you know, are very slow, and, and they can't, you know, sometimes they gotta cross the corner here at the light, then they gotta cross another, wait on the light, then cross over another corner, and then go on down to the monster. But I'd say some people, depending on their situation, just a little bit faster than a snail, so they, they may, they may have to wait on three buses just to get to the bus. I know you think I'm saying this as a joke, but it's true. It, because of conditions, some people can't move very fa, you know, not very mobile. And so another thing about the bus system, you got, see, you can have a bus that stop here and pick up people, then he go down the street eight blocks and stop and wait three minutes for nothing. He'll run off and leave a stack of people back there, you know, running over each other, about to get over, buy cars and everything, trying to get across the street and get on the bus, and that driver will pull off and leave all them people, go down the street about three or four miles, and stop. Kill the bus. They wait there two or three minutes, tell him that he can't get to a certain point before a certain time because his supervisor get mad. If he get that too soon, give me a break. The bus is designed to pick up the people. Don't they matter? Big old empty bus going to the end of the line, nobody, and you got 90 people right there, missed the bus on the kind of some sort of special law, you know, situation that's set up. I thought the people was more important. The bus is designed to carry the people, but if you're gonna leave the people and end up at the end of the line 'cause you had to be there at 8:45, give me a break. Time is more important than the people that you put out there to serve? I think we got this thing kinda backwards. And like I said, the location of the bus stop, some of them 50 to 75 to 100 feet from the corner. Give me a break. This is a joke. I'm sorry about that.
Thank you. Dorothy Barnes.
Good afternoon, Dorothy Barnes. I have a mailing address, P.O., Box 466, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89125. I have a number of things to address. I know I only have three minutes, but I met a man on the way to work, on my way here. He said, "I gotta go to work," but I hope you bring this up for me. And I have my own issue, my main issue here that brought me here today. Okay, I have a problem with people still riding the bus, telling lies, holding my name on a program where they selling illegal narcotics, and they're lying to keep my name in there to stifle off me. In other words, a dignified way of stealing from the disabled, sickly customers that ride the bus. They will put the people on the bus in order them to lie on me. Of course, sometimes it puts me in distress. I'm here, I'm sickly today. It puts me in distress sometimes with my condition because my doctor has to adjust me for the conditions I have and the medications I take for the different things I have to deal with medically-wise. So when I brought the letter from my doctor to be issued this disabled, reduced fare card, I didn't think I'd keep experiencing this problem. And it frustrates my doctor because I tell him I need to be the one on Ellis looking in on why they're holding me on this program. I know one of the reasons is to sell illegal narcotics. Another reason is the ones that are feaming off me for the illegal narcotics are using me to pay for their narcotics. So of course they have a connection with the bus company somehow. So I had to move out this month where I was renting a room from a lady while I'm on two housing lists waiting on affordable housing. Because of this situation, it puts me in this, where I can't afford housing, so I have to wait on the government housing program. And they have a problem getting the truth to place, I'll be 57 this June, senior than, senior housing if you don't have enough income. So I had to move out of a place where people were lying and maybe doing drugs and putting stuff in my food and making me sick. And so I ran into that problem before, where I had to live with somebody that was crazy on me practicing witchcraft, putting stuff in my food to make me sick, and my doctor said it's not right to put stuff in the patient's food to make him sick. So I'm gonna boil it down to this. I'm riding the bus, I'm lied on every day. I have a problem dealing with security 'cause sometime when I'm put out of a place where I don't have a housing, I don't have enough for it to a weekly or hotel room. Then I'm riding the bus all night, uh, sitting in a, a bus station, and they don't allow that. They don't allow that anymore 'cause a lot of homeless people are just housing out, which they probably be in the same situation I am, being lied on, stifled off, they stealing the medical money that the doctor ordered for the patient. And these people have become dependent on my income for their drug usage and drug selling, and maybe other homeless people are going through the same thing. So this man say, "Well, it's not right." When they first opened the new bus station, at first we couldn't use the toilet after hours. And it wasn't right 'cause there's no place around to use the toilet that you can run in, or all-night restaurant or something across the street from the new bus station. And it was a big problem to tell people they can't use the toilet after the bus station is closed. So finally, it was opened up, we'll let them in to use the toilet after we locked the, I locked the bus station. But a lot of people go in there and stay, they say. So I don't mean to tie your timer, but it is wrong to block the people out in the bad weather and stuff, the customers that have to go to work, that don't like to be out in the cold while they waiting to go to work. I don't know, it's a bad situation all over, because now they saying only one person will be allowed in the bathroom at a time.
All right, thank you.
I don't know. It's a bad problem.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
I have two final speakers. Both wanna be the last speaker, so...
My name is Sam Santoria, Vice President of ATU Local 1637. First of all, I'd like to thank MJ for her help this morning in settling an issue we've been having over meal breaks with some of these contractors, and that's good. My president couldn't be here today, so he has this statement he wants me to read. One, ATU is looking into a possible re-triggering of a thirteen C violation against the RTC since they moved a route from Simmons Yard to the Sunset Yard. Furthermore, rumor has it there will probably be more moves by the RTC to move routes from the Simmons Yard to Sunset Yard. By this transfer of route, RTC has committed a rearrangement of the implementation agreement that ATU have agreed with MV and Keolis. Commissioners, by way of a motion, should instruct RTC to stop the rearrangement of work. Two, MV has violated the implementation agreement by not paying the 401K, not paying holiday pay, ignoring the grievance procedure, and unilaterally making changes to working conditions without meeting and conferring with ATU. Can somebody on staff please investigate? Three, Mr. Pill from MV in a letter dated January thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen, lied to the RTC when he stated that ATU was aware that MV would be proposing a two-tier pay system. ATU contends that someone from RTC staff colluded with MV and the commissioners should investigate. And four, ATU has three unfair labor practice charges against Keolis, and they are no different than MV. They want to continue denying grievances to cost the union money to arbitrate terminations when they can be resolved. They are just like Veolia, which quite a few of Keolis management personnel are former Veolia employees, especially the Keolis chief negotiator. ATU asks that the commissioners terminate MV's contract and give more money to Keolis for our meals and breaks. We want parity for both yards. ATU is tired of being mistreated by the RTC staff, and that's from my president, Jose Manoza Junior. What I wanted to comment this morning on was the security issues. Mr. Keating said some of the customers don't want to pay. Well, if they don't pay, they're not a customer. They have a sign at Walmart that says, "We value our customers and we prosecute shoplifters." Well, people who don't pay their fare on the bus are not customers, are petty criminals. Have a recording announced to the passengers as they come on the bus. Pay the fare if you like to, or just ride for free. Personally, I don't think that's fair to the hard-working people who go out and buy bus passes and have to eat ramen noodles so they can ride the bus, and someone else is rewarded when they just say, "I'm not paying." Nothing you can do about it. The fare enforcement officers or security, all they can do is ask for identification. These people are smart enough out there to say, "I'm not showing you any identification. My name is Joe Blow. Write it down." And that's what they do. They'll trespass Joe Blow. Tomorrow, it's John Smith, same person. So...
Go ahead, Sam.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Are you sure?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Before I give the last speaker the microphone, anyone else wishing to speak? And if we could get the portable, I'm sorry, could we get the portable mic up to... I have the portable mic.
Thank you. I really don't need it.
Yes, you do.
I'm hour and hour.
Yes, you do.
I'm tiring until I get it.
All right. If you would please state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Arlene Shively. I come to the RTC meetings monthly because I got involved with transportation problems personally. I taught school for thirty-eight years, and I read about what's going on with education, and I should get involved with education, but that's too difficult a problem. I think it's much easier that I get up and try to solve the transportation problems because the category, the people within the RTC, somehow along the line, the people behind the diocese over there, you have to get erudite one day enough to see what is going on. The RTC is a very, quote, "large organization." It just doesn't deal with moving people, us passengers, riders, from one spot to the other. They have all these other issues, but they all are incumbent on the way that we live on earth. Now, the security issue, I was on a bus, and there was a security issue, and it was handled, what I thought, very erudite by the driver. The passenger was most, quote, "rambunctious." He started it. But anyway, each issue is different, but I'm glad I got up today to listen to the meeting today. Number one, I'm glad that Senator Titus is getting involved with the transportation issues because I also, you know, have a federal suit with them, and it has been ignored by Reed and HEC, and I hope to reach Titus before my last day on earth is gone. You know, I've dealt, I'm eighty-seven, and I dealt with RTC for ten years. My experiences with the paratransit were not happy because I was being picked up on the strip, and of course, my encounter of the assault was on a deuce strip bus, but the people on the strip are different than the normal people that might be assaulting out there where these other drivers are talking about. But I was glad to know that it is an issue. I don't care whether it's on a strip bus because I had issues with paratransit as I got picked up from the strip. So the strip riders, they are handled differently, and this driver on this strip bus, I have to give him plaudits about the way he handled the rambunctious passenger, whether he was a, he probably was a local and not a tourist. But anyway, I live in the world.
All right, you're going to close?
I'm going to close it with saying God bless all of you, and you gave us, you gave me a very happy meeting today because you did more than just sit there, and Ms. G, in particular, had very educational response to all the chit-chat that she got from the RTC. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board?
Can I speak for the other person that won't be making this call?
Ms. Barnes already spoke. So with that, we will close this portion of public comment. Wish everybody a happy weekend, and Monday, make sure you wear your green. St. Patrick's Day. This meeting is adjourned.